All right, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting. It is 7:40. We are called to order. Please rise and pledge the flag. Roll call, please, Angela.
Here.
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 Here. And Angela, for the record, Councilman Scott is not here today because of a potential COVID issue.
Mr. President, I note for the record that we were in executive session from approximately 7 o'clock to approximately 7:35.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending on this horrendously cold evening. First up for council consideration, approval of meeting minutes from the December 14, 2021 meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion from Ms. Nolan, second by Mr. Heil to approve the meeting minutes from December 14. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then thank you.
Next, we have an award presentation from the Red Cross. Mr. Larry Daley and Mr. Steve, is it, I'm sorry, was it Williams, sir? Thomas, pardon me. And Mr. Steve Thomas. Our, my next guest was Johnson. Are here from the Red Cross to present to Chief Todd Beretta and Francis Shorty Schultz, who, yes, I was just about to say, does not appear to be in the audience this evening. Yes, sir. Thank you. Please, gentlemen, come up to the, come up to the podium. The microphone, oh, if you could, please, Angela, give them the wireless. And it's a push-to-talk?
I didn't, I didn't actually know that part of the story. Chief, I didn't actually know that part of the story with the forklift and with Shorty. Thank you very much for, I, I didn't know that detail. Thank you, thank you so much for coming out and doing that.
Thanks again, gentlemen. Have a great night. And thank you, Chief. All right. Next up, we have the presentation of the 2021 Best Decorated Homes Awards. And on that note, I will toss it to our mayor, Beth Jackseer.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Every year, the Bridgeport Police Department holds a home decoration competition during the holiday season among the homes in Bridgeport. It's very exciting. The officers who were on patrol during this time came together and were able to determine which homes they believe had the best decorated displays in each ward. So for Ward 1, we have Evelina Cooper of 120 West 7th Street. Ward 2, oh, yeah, clap, clap. Ward 2 was Louis and Christine Trioli of 414 East Rambo Street. And our Award 3 and overall winner is Kelly Wallace of 213 Mill Street. Yeah, so I'm told our Award 2 winner is not here, but if I could get Evelina up front and then Kelly, we could do award distribution and pictures. So, thank you.
Congrats, guys. Ms. Wallace, have you won the, have you won that award any other years, any prior years? Oh, sorry, I was looking, yes, yeah, I'm sorry. Hey, congratulations. It's a new, a new address on the list that I usually, I usually see up there for best Christmas lights.
Excuse me, would I be able to make one comment just regarding the lights?
Please.
So I talked with Lou Trioli tonight, and he was, unfortunately, was able to attend because they've been ill. But during the course of our conversation, he related that his son has been nominated to the U.S. Military Academy at West Point by Congresswoman Madeline Dean, and he's just waiting for his acceptance. So I said, hey, that's pretty good news. So I'd say something about it tonight.
Thanks, Chief.
And Evelina, was that the same for you? Was that the first time you won the Christmas lights? Usually, you can tell, you can tell year-on-year, people just add to their displays, so it's good to see some new ones up there.
Well, Evelina, Kelly, thank you both, and thank all of you for, for coming out tonight and for showing the Christmas spirit. You're more than welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but it's cold and it's only going to get colder, so if you want to get a, get on the road and get back into your warm homes, we're certainly not going to begrudge you. So, thank you, and you guys have a wonderful night. All right. Next up, we have a sign fee waiver request from Bridgeport Little League. Members of council, in your packets, you will find a letter from the, from the president of Bridgeport Little League, as they customarily do this time of year, requesting a waiver from the, the typical sign registration fee that, that we generally acquire. So if council sees fit to make this customary approval, please proceed.
I'll make a motion for the waiver request.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Gundrum to waive the sign fee for Bridgeport Little League. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or the public? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Then that's unanimous. Congratulations, Bridgeport Little League.
All right. Very good. Next up, for council consideration, agreement between Bridgeport Borough and Swicus Amusements for the 2022 Bridgeport Carnival. Members of council, in your packets, you will see a draft contract from Swicus Amusements. Very, generally, it's the, I shouldn't say generally, it's, it's the same template agreement that we sign annually. Just some of the particulars. The dates for Bridgeport this year would be June 21st through 25th, which I believe mirrors what we did in 2021. Generally, historically, we've done the, the second week somewhere right in that 15th to the 19th, or 16th to the 20th. So we're, we're a week later this year, as we were last year. And I don't know if it was the, everybody being pent up for COVID, or if the, the week was, the week was just more fortuitous, but we enjoyed our most successful carnival of record, both attendance and, and revenue-wise last year. So let's stay the course and stick to that third week in June. As is normal, it's, it's going to be a Tuesday through Saturday, Tuesday through Friday. The hours would be 6:00 PM till close, and Saturday would be 3:00 PM till close. And that is, you know, besides other boring minutia, that's really about the two most pertinent factors there in terms of public consumption. So if council sees fit to authorize me to execute this, I would do that forthright.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Mr. Fee, seconded by Ms. Nolan to authorize our Borough management to execute the agreement between the Borough and Swicus Amusements for the Carnival. Any additional questions or comments from council?
One comment. I know that in past years, we've had people asking about activities at the carnival for older kids, like 13, for, like teenagers, because so a lot of the rides are for younger kids, and so my kids love it, but just if it could be brought out to make sure that everything, like knowing what's going to be coming so that it's accessible for kids of all ages, I guess.
Sure, Mr. Heil, and, yeah, and they, they always, they always effort to do that. Generally, it's, the way they determine what, what rides are going to be at, at what event is the footprint that they have to work with, what has been popular at their, at their other events leading up to, and what is, is not down for repair. So we do try, we do try to request a nice mixture of age group, age-appropriate rides and activities, and we will continue to do so, sir. Thank you.
I have no doubt, and I just know that comes up, so I want it on the record. Thank you.
You got it.
Any other comments from council? Or the public on the Carnival? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
And next up, for council consideration, Resolution 2022-014. It was, apologies, it was misnumbered to 001 on your agenda, how it is 014. And this is for the designation of agent form for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Members of council, as we did late in, late in the year, last year, for the FEMA Public Assistance Program, whenever you enter into a grant program through FEMA, or any federal funding agency for that matter, they want a designation of agent form. It basically says who's going to be the point of contact moving forward insofar as construction management, project management, and financial management. So this is an obligatory form in order to proceed with the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Nolan to adopt Resolution 2022-014, designate Mr. Truman as the agent for this FEMA program. Any additional questions or comments? From the public? Then all those in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, for council consideration, bid advertisement for the Montco 2040-funded trail project. And for this, I am going to take a brief departure from the, from the PowerPoint presentation in order to bring up some designs, or a design, rather. Members of council and the public? Pardon technical difficulties. Members of council and the audience, Bridgeport Borough was the recipient of a grant in 2020 for the, for the, the grant application that we submitted to the Montco 2040 program to create what you, what you see in front of you here. It is going to, this project involves the installation of new curb and sidewalk along, at the foot of Grove Street, so basically Grove Street from the corner of 9th and Grove down to Union, as well as a walking trail that meanders up the, up the side of the Memorial Park Hill and ultimately connects up top, right about here where my cursor is, connects with the walking trail. And for those of you familiar with Grove Street, you, if you drive by, you see an old pair of, or an old set of stone stairs that lead just straight into the hillside right now. We would, we would use that for the entry point. Obviously, those stairs would need to get refurbished, but, but that location as the entry point. And it would curve up the hill and, like I said, snake its way up to connection up here. Along the way, there will be some solar-powered streetlights, or light posts, rather, interspersed along the trail, along with some trash and recycle, trash recycling receptacles, and some park benches to sit on the hillside and enjoy the, the beautiful vistas. Because of, because of COVID and, you know, a host of other issues that beleaguered the Borough in 2021, we are, we're slightly late on, insofar as getting this project out for advertisement and bid. However, that is not uncommon with funding programs of this nature, especially this year, given, given what COVID has done to most municipalities, best-laid plans, so on and so forth. However, we are, we're now at the juncture where administration and the, our engineers at Gannett Fleming believe we are ready to proceed with putting this project out to bid. I just wanted to bring up, just so everybody's familiar with where we're talking about, the, the sidewalk would be installed along the right-hand side of Grove from the parking lot at 9th and Grove all the way down to Union. It would be standard width per ADA requirements, standard width sidewalk. And pardon me. Put together a small synopsis. The Grove Street sidewalk extension intends to construct new sidewalks where none currently exist on the south side of Grove Street, from Union to the parking lot at Grove and 9th, with a pedestrian crossing to the pathway leading to Bridgeport Elementary. The second part of the improvements is to construct a meandering walking trail with several benches on the hill connecting. In total, we estimate this project to cost $241,000. The Montco 2040 Grant Program provided us with $192,800 of that, meaning that the Borough only has about a $40,000 obligation insofar as, insofar as the local match. As I have already stated, in order to get this rolling, we would need to advertise the bid, and that is what I am seeking authorization for this evening. If anybody from the audience or from the dais have any questions, please feel free. Thank you.
Just one point about Grove Street. I mean, I love the walking trail plan. We've covered that a couple times last year, but the installation of curbing there on Grove Street, that's just good stormwater management. Am I, am I correct in that? Beyond the aesthetics and the, and the connection to the park, adding that will be just good practice for stormwater management.
Mr. Woodin?
Oh, there's new technology here. Yes, Mr. President, we've had long discussions with the people along Grove Street. When the repaving was done, we were careful to make sure that we crowned the road more to keep water on the park side and not run off to the other side. This would only add to that, in my opinion, because it would create a gutter now and channel the water on that side of Grove Street.
It's a nice infrastructure benefit that we get from the project, so, thank you, Mr. Woodin.
And maybe the chief could have pined on this, too, but I do know from my kids going to Bridgeport Elementary, when they have fire drills and other things, they often come out to the park area. This could, in the future, add to those safety recommendations for the school, for getting out if they needed to, you know, for, for future plans, because there's a lot of kids that might come out, so there's more space for them to walk safely and then get back to school. So there are added benefits that I don't think we realized when we first were discussing this, and I'm excited for making it more, except, connected to the Borough.
So we are seeking a motion to authorize the Borough to put the project out for bid?
That is correct, President Schenk.
I'll make a motion to put it out to bid.
I'll second.
Motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Gundrum to authorize the Borough to put this project out to bid, as described by Keith. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or the public on the project? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all, and thank you for your patience as I maneuver my way through this new projector and screen setup. That concludes the manager's report portion of tonight's festivities, and with that, we can move forward to with new business. Are there any members of council with new business this evening? Unfinished business. Thank you. Are there any members of council with unfinished business this evening? Very good. Seeing none, are there any committee reports that council members may wish to share? Wonderful. Moving forward to the mayor's report. Mayor Jackseer, do you have anything for us this evening?
Boy, do I ever. Okay. So in my first week, I've got a lot of stuff going on, so I just want to share it with council and the public for, if anyone's interested. So pretty much, I've begun familiarizing myself with the current Bridgeport Police Department rules and regulations, just working with the chief of police here to keep it up to date with the assistance of an outside party. I have also familiarized myself with our police officer's current collective bargaining agreement, so now I understand what my role is within their contract, my responsibilities and such, so I am apprised on that. I, with the help, help of Dave Nash, have completed my Criminal Justice Information Services Security Awareness Training, which allows me to essentially walk around the police station unescorted and allow me to interact with police officers without needing, needing a babysitter, which is nice, because then it doesn't hinder any time or energies on the officer's part. I have also begun the process of working with the chief, Borough Administration, and Borough councils to start exploring the creation of an official Borough slogan for everyone to use, something that everyone likes and is reflective of the progress that we're making in town. So that's exciting. And I guess day-to-day news, the chief and I are meeting pretty much daily, so I'm apprised on day-to-day happenings around town, any, I guess, public safety or police matters. If anyone has questions on that I'm able to answer, please let me know, and I will do my best to help. But I think for now, that is all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Jackseer. Moving forward to the chief's report. Chief Beretta, do you have anything for us this evening, sir?
Just a couple of things. I put out a public safety video two days ago regarding PICO frauds. We had one victim on 7th Street receive a phone call from someone claiming they were attacked with PICO, saying that they had one hour in which to rectify their three-to-four a month non-payment status, and they would have to go to an authorized PICO location to do so, and they suggested the In-N-Out Market. So it, they didn't actually do it. It wasn't, there was no loss with that individual, but just as a general rule, PICO, after speaking with PICO, PICO will only interact through the mail with, with, with folks. So if you receive a phone call from somebody claiming that, it's not PICO. So PICO's security is also aware and actually asks that we post those to the Borough sites, and which we've done. So PICO will never, never call. It gets a little complicated, because in this case, someone used what we call spoof number. So there's a phone number and name that comes back up on, on a digital screen on the phone, and you think that that's who it is. Well, I called that number today and talked to somebody, and I don't believe it's the same person, because the person that the attempted victim would have spoken to, there was a heavy accent, it's clearly like an offshore type of operation. So, but it's complicated enough that they're spoofing phone numbers, so if something does come up on the screen, it might not be who you think it is. So if you have any kind of issue where people ask you over the phone to do something in short order from a company, get their name, phone number, and ask where you can call them back, and then call your own phone number from your own billing statement. them back, and then call your own phone number from your own billing statement, whether it be PICO or someplace else. Also, if someone else, whether they're elderly, infirm, or whomever, or highly suggestible, any kind of scam, whether it's PICO or any other ones, that asks people to go and get scratch-off cards, gift cards, things like that, and then to call them back and read off the numbers and letter combinations, it's a scam. No one in normal business does that. I actually called the In-N-Out Market, just in case other people actually went and did this. I called the owner and said, listen, if anyone shows up and looks like they want to buy these cards, or transfer monies, or whatever, you please call the police. They might not believe it, but you call the police. So, just be good friends and neighbors, talk about it, cause a chatter, so that we don't have people losing money unnecessarily from them. We've had, we've had some issues. We had the arrest of somebody today for retail theft, and, and as it turns out, the person was wanted for gun charges for state parole. So, you never know what the impact of any person is that police come in contact with. And, and lastly, 2021 was a horrible year for law enforcement. Law enforcement fatalities went up 55%. Ambushes, COVID, many different things impacted. I think there were 458 police officers that were killed last year. So, that's a lot. So, you know, for the, the men and women of the Bridgeport Police Department and in the region, so, you know, have to hold the line for everyone, so it was a terrible year for, for that. Commercial burglaries, you might have heard or talked about that, so we had some commercial burglars where people actually stole trailers and truck combinations from adjoining businesses to steal ATVs and heavy equipment down off of DeKalb Street. So, it's an organized ring, we're looking at the people that would sell or purchase, or, or locations where they would sell it, and methodology for selling it. If something seems odd to you in your neighborhood, or if you live adjacent or close by those things, call the police. If you see people that are trying door handles at night, call the police. Don't wait till the next day, don't talk about it on social media. Well, please, talk about it on social media, because more people will call us, but please call the police. We had a great letter from Mr. Dave Kuna, who called in, because three days ago in the morning, around 5:30 in the morning, our officer saw that the garage door was partially up, and they're, they're, they're checking doors, they rang the doorbell, asked them if they had their garage door up, up or down, and so we're making those kind of contacts. So, the guys are out there, sometimes they're going to be in unmarked cars, also, looking for the same, these same folks. So, if something doesn't seem right, just please call. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Chief Beretta. Moving on to new business, now, are there any members of council with new business for, for this evening?
Mr. Truman, I was thinking today, knowing that a number of Borough staff have those better masks than we do, that are being recommended now, maybe for future meetings, if there's a way for the Borough to provide those for all Borough council members and staff that have to be here, including, you know, Merrill, Steve Wanzick, or the, not that we have to use them, but I think it'd be good to have those available if you could procure them.
Are you referring to N95 masks?
Yeah, like Sal's wearing and showing off, he's our model here.
Okay, sure. Any, any other items of new business this evening? All right, very good. Moving on to open forum and announcements. Any announcements? Very well. Public comment, are there any members of the public that wish to come forward with a comment? Very well. Seeing none, and if there's nothing further from members of the dais, council could certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All right, everyone, thank you for coming out this evening. It's 8:14, we are adjourned.